We're going to call a meeting to order at seven o'clock.
Wilson.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Morris.
Here. Item two is organization of the board. A, seating of elected board member Shane Morris. I got that standing right there.
You just have to recite that.
Okay. Administration of the offices. I, Shane Morris, hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of Freedom School Board of the Freedom Public Schools to the best of my ability and that I will faithfully discharge all of the duties pertaining to set office and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States and Oklahoma. Item B is discussion of possible action to reorganize the Board of Education. One, election of officers of the Board of Education. Is there any?
You'll need a motion and a second and a vote for each of the positions, or you can do them as a whole.
The only one that we don't have is a deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk will be a new one for us. It will be in place of the deputy clerk. If personally gets to sign their name when the clerk is absent that day.
All right, I nominate Shane for president.
That's seconded.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Vice President, I'll nominate Donald.
Second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number three is a clerk. I nominate Ken Wilson. Second, Ken Wilson.
Shaun.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. And item four is a deputy clerk.
Robert.
I nominate Bob Second.
Yeah.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Adam Stein.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Okay, got that right.
And there's no need for any other administration of oaths.
Okay. Consent agenda. The following items may be approved in their entirety by the Board upon motion made, seconded, and then passed by majority. Any member may request a separate vote on any or all items contained in the consent agenda.
Make motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
I would second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number five, information report, superintendent's report.
All right, ransomware is cleaned and gone and we've got some antivirus software in place to hopefully keep that from happening again. Created triple redundancy in our software backups so that hopefully that won't happen again and if it does, it'll be quick to fix. For the most part, every computer now in the district has been updated to Windows 10. That's now pretty much done except for a couple laptops and I just haven't sat down and done them. But I don't believe there's any teacher system or student system left that is waiting for me to touch. So everybody's going and so hopefully we'll never hear ransomware again. Again, the Attorney General's training that I told you guys about last board meeting is in Woodward this week. Originally had planned to go to that, knowing that I'm going to be gone a couple of the days this month. I'm electing not to attend that meeting. Would be a good meeting, but I think I'm pretty okay on the Open Meeting Act. But you guys would get points if you chose to go. I do need to know before you leave tonight about Region Two, if you're planning to attend Region Two so that tomorrow I can get us all signed up for sure. That is at Burlington on the 24th. We can go over that night. I need to know if you're going to go for the pre-conference and get three credits or just to the regular conference and get two credits. Let me know which way you want to do it. Meal is served. I will be attending the ORIS Conference in Shawnee on the 26th and 27th. So that's why I'm not going on the 12th because I will be going there for that. Gym painting was supposed to start today, but I got a call on Friday. They had a job that was almost finished at Langston University and it got held up. So they're going to be coming later this week, tentatively planned for Wednesday or Thursday. So I'm staying in contact with them to find out when they're, to make sure. So we've had Coach send out a message to let parents know that we weren't traveling to Woodward and practicing this week. If we do, it'll be Thursday or Friday that we'll be traveling and using a gym in Woodward. And then I'm going to postpone the rest of mine. I've got something to go over with you guys, but let Ms. Shealite go over the principal's report and then I'll come back and finish out.
On the Voyager Grant, Mr. Miller actually worked his magic and had some contacts and got us that grant which allows our pre-K through fourth graders to work on their reading skills. It came with an assessment tool as well. So our students have passport they can work on, ticket to read, and then the Dibbles which is the tool. So we know, they've all been assessed. So we know where they stand and what they need to help them become sufficient in their reading. So that was a really good thing for us. The Fall Carnival is coming up. It's Saturday, October 14th. There will be dinner served, concession, silent auction, bunch of different games. Should be fun for everybody as it comes. I have a list of games if anybody's interested, but there's a ton of them, so I'm not listing all those at this point. Fall Break, Thursday, October 19th and Friday, October 20th next week. So make sure everybody gets that out and prepared and doesn't show up on the front door with nobody here. Red Ribbon Week starts Monday, October 23rd and goes through that whole week. Have a few things planned, still planning on that a little bit. Been looking forward to that week as well, some activities. Veterans Day Assembly is Friday, November the 10th. Mrs. Tyree is putting together a program, working with some others as well. She's having the students make invitations to send out so we can get some more veterans in. You guys can spread the word too. We want as many people here as we can. Mrs. Emil is working with their FCC LA and they're going to fix lunch for the veterans that come. So they're planning that and putting lists together to go purchase things. The National FFA Convention is Wednesday, October 25th through Saturday, October 28th. Mr. Weber and Mrs. Strel will be the sponsors for that. We have eight of our current students and three former alumni that will be attending that. And then basketball season's getting ready to start. Our opener for that is Tuesday, November the 7th. So hopefully, hopefully we'll have a lot of people here watching and cheering us on.
All right. This next thing, I'm going to go very quickly. This is a much longer presentation than what I'm going to be giving you tonight. I'm kind of giving you a snippet and an overview. This is a presentation I sat through with the State Department and most superintendents at this point have sat through this. All getting prepared because there's some big changes happening in our, for our state. If you followed at all, we've been changing our assessments. We've had, at one point, we, back in the day, we had PAST skills that we taught to, PAST standards that we taught to. And then those got changed to, I forgot what was in the middle of OAS.
Common Core.
To the Common Core standards and then now like OAS and they keep, are changing and morphing these. In that, you know, Oklahoma is unique that we write our own test bank. Our own teachers sit down and they get, coming to Oklahoma City and they sit down and work together on test questions and what we're going to test and how we're going to ask those questions. And we make our own test bank and then we pay some company millions of dollars to write our tests for us. It's how we've been doing it for years. Right now, we're in a transition to a new set of standards. Anytime you change standards, the tests have to change. This is right now, we're in a transition to ACT or SAT. And why this is happening more is because we're trying to align to a national standard. So that's kind of what this is going to be going over some of the things, why the state's doing what they're doing, why they're telling us to do what we're doing. And again, this is also being driven because of the change from No Child Left Behind to ESSA, which is the reauthorization of the 1960 whatever that federal law was, I forget the name of it at the moment. So it's transitioning again. So Oklahoma has looked at what we're doing for our students and we were assessing our students based upon our tests and saying that about 70% of our students were ready to go to college. But they were going to college and were having to take remedial courses. So the question bit came, why aren't these kids ready? What's going on? So that started some looking into what we're doing as a state. And what they have come up with, they began to look at why we're doing what we're doing. This is a workforce trends data that they've, this was a Georgetown study that I referenced once before. But you can see that over the next, or over the past decade roughly, jobs that required a high school degree or less, a high school diploma or less have continually dropped. Associate's degree are starting to rise, master's degree, bachelor's degree. So we know that students are going to need some sort of training after high school. That does not necessarily mean college degree, but it does mean some sort of training, some sort of certificate training, electrical training, journeyman training, career tech, some kind of training. Just having a high school diploma is not going, not going to be enough anymore. Someone smarter than myself has come back and they've looked at what they say in 10 years the job market requires. You can see right now that in 2015, 46% of the jobs you could get with a high school diploma or less. And 30% with an associate's degree and you can see the numbers there. What is getting ready to massively shift however, is the associate, the certificate, or the credential. So just because you have a high school diploma now, it's not going to be enough for a lot of people unless you become a self-made person. So there's now a big push to make sure our kids are ready to go into the workforce or into college. So you can see with that, this is what's stemming some of our, some of the things we're getting ready to start doing. This would be, the kids that are impacted with this the most that are going to see this change is our fifth graders. Whatever fifth grade class, that's the group that's going to ride this all the way through. So if you think of what our fifth graders right now, that's who, those are those kids. Everybody else is going to have some sort of phase in for all projects. So Ms. Shealite can tell you that like our seniors this year have a different graduation requirement than our seniors that next year will have and our seniors the year after that is starting to phase in.
I asked your question.
Yes, sir.
What are we doing to adjust to that middle group?
As far as what?
Well, it was the largest increase.
We, this is...
They're in the fifth grade now.
To get ready to, for this group right here?
Yes.
We are beginning to start what's called an I-CAP program. This is an initiative from the state that we will sit down with our sixth graders.
We've already started.
We've already started? I didn't know we'd gotten with that part yet.
You've started it?
Yes.
Sitting down with our sixth graders and talking to them about career choice. What do they think they're going to be doing? What do they want to do? And then begin to set up classes or training, if it's career tech or if it's college level mindset, they can start looking at the direction they want to go.
So that means a lot of colleges are going to be going out of business?
I don't think so.
Well, we can only hope.
I, I think they're going to shift, kind of like what Oklahoma, or what high schools have done. They're going to end up shifting and creating a product that people want to...
Constitution.
Well, part of that's associate's degree as well, so.
Yeah, as part of, yeah, part of this group is the associate's degree, two years of college.
So you guys very concerned with the sixth graders or fifth graders?
Sixth.
Sixth grade.
Karen Kane from Northwest Career Tech comes over and works with sixth grade and our eighth grade once a month. She'll be here tomorrow for our eighth graders.
Okay. Now what's our trend here? How many, have we surveyed them yet to find out how many are going to college?
Don't believe we have that yet, but I'm not sure.
With the exception, we have eight seniors this year and with the exception of two, they plan on going to college of some sort. Two of those plan on going to career tech.
So six are going to college?
That's their plans.
For a bachelor's degree?
Okay. So how do we compare, if we're going to start using the ACT or the SAT, how do we compare to it? And then how can we assure the Oklahoma students in third through eighth grade are on track for college or career? That's the same questions you're kind of asking.
Right.
We can look right now at our preliminary results that the ACT, 46% of our students are meeting the minimum score of an 18. This is statewide data. Mathematics, 25% are meeting the requirement of a 22. And 37% are meeting benchmark for reading. And then you can see the SAT, 45% are meeting benchmark for reading and writing and 23% are meeting benchmark for mathematics. So you can see when you put our data into the national realm, we've got some work to do. We've got to do some changes. And if you've looked at the old PAST skills, and this has been a complaint with administration for a while, when I say administration, I talk of it as a whole. You talk to the state with our PAST skills who are not aligned to national standards. So what, if we're teaching our own and we're doing this, are we preparing our kids to go into a national mindset world? Are we just preparing them for an Oklahoma school was the mindset? So you can see that that's come full circle and we've recognized there's an issue and are now making that change.
But that's the state.
That's the state, correct.
What is our school?
I'm sorry?
What is our school?
I don't have that data right now. And it would be, and it would actually be too narrow for me to give in public because there's too few of kids.
But are we above them?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? On that previous screen?
We're going to be going over this with teachers.
I just wanted to know how many of those are seniors or is that?
That's everybody that takes ACT.
Okay, so they're not just seniors?
No.
Okay.
39% of Oklahoma 2015 high school graduates had to take remedial classes in college. That's just the state data right now as a state in 2015. And that always lags a couple years behind. If you remember, I presented the R remediation report last month, which really couldn't say anything about it, that our kids went to college and there's no data because it's too, again, too small to reveal statistically. So we know that there's an issue. Tax force recommendations for Oklahoma assessments, that we needed to do something basically as this goes through. We needed to look at what we're doing for college and career readiness and we needed to look at what we can do. And what they chose as a state, a test that's been around for a very long time, it's been given for 60 years or so, 50 years or so, is called the National Assessment for Educational Progress, the NAEP. That's been given for years and years and years. So we have long-term longitudinal, longitude, I can't say the word now. Thank you. Data that tells us how our kids match up with their standards, with a national set of standards. And this is what is really shocking. When we, our kids take the OCCT, which is our Oklahoma test, we were saying that 70% of our fourth graders were on track in reading, but when they took the NAEP, only 33% were ready. Same with fourth grade math, 72% were proficient and 37% according to the NAEP. You can see our eighth graders, that 75% were proficient and 29% in reading, 53% of eighth grade in math and 23% according to the NAEP. So this tells us we're not necessarily aligned. We're not necessarily assessing the same information. Again, you can look at this, and this is from 2012 and 13. One thing to notice in this, or to know about this, it's a little bit skewed because in 2012, 13, or any eighth grader that took algebra did not have to take this test because they were exempted. So your really smart math kids, the kids that were advanced, did not have to participate in this because they were already taking a high school class. So when you start seeing this, we said that 42, Oklahoma was in the 42nd percentile. We're in the bottom part of it, in accordance with NAEP. But when you start looking at 13 through 15th, our growth, this is when we started beginning to make changes. This is how long this change has started to process. We increased though, we had a great level of reading increase and that's being attributed to our focus on early childhood reading. When we began to focus on that early childhood reading, with the Voyager program and things like that. So we know that we've started making changes. We can see that the changes are having positive effects. We just got a little bit further to go. Since 2011, 45 states have raised their standards for student proficiency in reading and math with the greatest gains between 2013 and 15. 45 states have already done this. Oklahoma's just lagging behind a little bit. So we're finally catching up. We're not the only state to have done that. And this is really what I wanted you to see. Two caught examples, if you want to look at that, Utah and Arizona, both had, have gone through this process, the same thing that the state of Oklahoma is doing. So in 2013, you can see that they went from an 83% by state standard to a 42% when they went to the NAEP. A 79% in math to a 42%. You can see the same kind of thing with Arizona, two years of their data, then they made the switch in 14 to 15 and it dropped again. And then you see another year after that, the scores begin to come back up because now we know the target we're hitting. And we're now focused on that. You can see that this is going to be how we're transitioning. So I told you, we started in 2014, beginning to make some of these transitions and we're still making transitions. It's going to be, it's a long process. But what really happened last year, and this is kind of why I'm going over this with you now because the test changed last year drastically. It's not the same thing that we gave in 16, it's not the same thing we gave in 15 or 14. It drastically changed last year. And it's still going to continue changing. They're still going to be rolling it out. Some of the assessments are going to be coming. What's changing in evolving workforce requirements? How many people do you know that go into the workforce now that do not have to have any computer skills? And your, most of all the jobs now are some type of computer. At a minimum, you have to know how to turn it on and push the button. And then you freak out when something doesn't go right. Look at CNC, how much we do in CNC machining or anything of that nature. New comprehensive standards are coming, more complex testing's coming, aligning to the new standards. New descriptors are coming. And something that we're getting, Ms. Shealite and I are working on, and I'm just giving you a real brief overview because is a something called a depth of knowledge. We have, when we ask questions, if you remember from class, a lot of history classes, the one I usually pick on for this, when did Columbus, I said being Columbus, stay, when did Columbus come to America?
1492.
That is a level one recall question. Why did Columbus come to America?
It was run away from Shan Wilson.
Now you're starting to get to, you start to get more depth and then the further you go into the depth of knowledge, they have to know more about the issue or the situation, not just a simple fact recall. They have to know more about it to answer a question. It becomes more complex. Depth of knowledge is a common term educators use to describe the complexity of learning tasks and test items. It's becoming more complex. Difficulty is not equivalent to complexity. Just because the question may be difficult does not mean it's complex. That is something we have to train teachers to. You don't have to make the question difficult to make it complex. There is a difference in that. To go through these real quick, level one is a simple skill. A level two is a mental process beyond recalling, so know a little bit more. Level three is reasoning, planning, and then use evidence. And level four is complex reasoning, planning, and developing, and thinking over an extended period of time. This is your high order thinking skills. This is where, and I'm not saying I'm a fan of the Common Core, but this is where Common Core, when you saw those weird math questions, when they said, well, 2 plus 2 is 4, but now you can't give it to me in that answer, you have to tell me, another way of telling me 2 plus 2 is 4. What they're trying to do is get to a higher level of reasoning. They want the student to come back and say, well, I know it's 4, but I can also tell you that 1 plus 3 is 4 or 5 minus 1 is 4. They want the student to be able to think at that level because they're trying to get to a deeper level of knowledge. And that's where some of that got confused along the way because it really wasn't explained to students or parents very well. Reason, knowing depth of knowledge is important is because in their old PAST standards, now this was assessed by an outside group, not Oklahomas, that we brought them in and said, look at our test questions. Look at our test data. Tell us what? What level of questions did we have? Under the old PAST system, 61% of ours were level two. So all you needed to know is just a little bit above a recall for 61% of the questions. Only 14% needed to know, needed to know that third level. 25% was just recall data. Just regurgitate a fact to me, just regurgitate a number to me. But in the new standards, what we have come out now, we actually have level four questions that come out, that 9% of our questions are level four. So we've got to train students to think this way, we've got to train teachers to think this way and get, get ready for a higher level of thinking. That's probably one of our bigger tasks for Ms. Shealite and myself is to get, get to there. Because almost all teachers at some point have had a blip of what's called Bloom's taxonomy. They had a blip of it, but now we're actually using it. So we've got to go back and retrain. And we're planning to start meeting monthly with teachers to go over some of this and help our teachers get prepared and answer questions and get ready for it so that we can provide the best education for our kids. You see again, depth of knowledge, 3% is where we were at before and none, none of the past. So just about done. Federal ESSA guidelines that are coming out, so we've got to adopt comprehensive academic standards. We've got to assess math and reading, English, language arts, that's what ELA is, in grades three through eight. Wants in grade 9... 3 through 8 once, in grade 9 through 12, and assess science at least once in the following grades, 3 through 5, 6 through 9, and 10 through 12. So that's the new federal wall that tells us when we have to do those. So we will be doing that. Some terminology changes that will be coming. And we've got some information to send out to parents on this, once this comes out. The NAEP uses these qualifiers, advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. Oklahoma has used for a long time, advanced, proficient, limited knowledge, and unsatisfactory. But Superintendent Joy Hoffmeister did not like that we're using limited knowledge and satisfactory and has asked for a change that for more clarification, that we switch to on proficient, that that means they're on track for college and career ready, whichever choice they're doing. Limited knowledge means they're developing, they're not quite there. Unsatisfactory means they're beginning or emerging. It's just a little more, I think, a little more friendly. I kind of agree with it. Because how would you like, as a student in third grade, to be told, well, you're unsatisfactory?
I just go cold stupid.
Yeah, so we're trying to, we're trying to change some of the language. What will it look, what will look different moving forward? You cannot compare in any form, any fashion, last year's testing data to this year's testing data. It is completely different. If you remember the two pie charts, it's completely different.
So we're going to drop down?
Oh, yes, the entire state is going to do that. We already saw that with the ACT because we had everyone take it and the ACT dropped.
The one bar graph you had with Oklahoma sitting over here, but Wilson, was that set by a population or was that just set up?
It's just state-owned.
Yeah, but had all the other different states on there, was there a?
The growth.
Population?
Are you meaning a subset?
Like Oklahoma, we have a whole bunch of farmers, a lot of land, New York has a whole bunch of people.
All of our students, just the students, period. All the kids involved. They didn't break the data down further. It's just all the kids involved. So we do have new standards with higher levels of depth of knowledge, new assessments with a different scale score and different performance levels descriptors. So that, I kind of covered those. Just realize that when the data comes out, the biggest thing we've got to make sure parents understand, we've got to make sure teachers understand because I know if I was in the classroom sitting there and I see that last year I had 70% of my students proficient and this year I have 20% of my students, what did I do wrong? I would take it personal because teachers take their students very personal, what, how well they do. So we've already got a meeting scheduled with our staff to go over this and say, hey, this is not a reflection of you. They've changed the target, but here's the new data. Get ready for next year because then we'll get a real picture of what we're doing or not doing. So that's the big message is don't, can't compare the two. That's the biggest thing that Joy was wanting to make sure everybody understood fully. Do not compare the two because they're not, they're so far from apples and oranges, it's even further than that. No comparison this year is a total reset. We're starting over. Because of state law though, we have to have an A through F grade. That's state law. The legislature did not choose to allow us a one-year reprieve to allow the real data to come out. So there is going to be an A through F grade come out, that'll be coming out in the spring for this year. So it's a late delay, but it will be coming out. But it's nothing compared, it's completely different. It's not even a full, the way that the new A through F is going, it's not even full data because you have to, there's not even a growth component because you can't have growth if you don't have two years of data. So, but that's what our state law has right now, so we'll do it.
So we're going to get that?
We have no idea what's going to be on there. It's going to be incomplete no matter what it is because there's no growth component at all. There's no way you can compare the two. So this year, testing requirements, that's how we're going to be assessing our test requirements this year. All 11th graders will take the ACT or SAT that is required. And then they will have a second test for the science component because the SAT and SAT does not match Oklahoma's standards for science. So that's why there has to be another assessment. So there's a lot of information there and there's a lot more into that, so.
Item 6 is general. A, discussion of possible action to declare items as surplus according to Appendix B.
Man, this is computers and stuff that we removed over the summer. I'm just getting rid of stuff that's in boxes, filling up corners.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Bev Cop?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
B is discussion of possible action to approve resolution, calling that annual board member election seat 3 to be held February 13, 2018 with a runoff, if needed, scheduled for April 10, 2018. Filing period is December 4 through the 6 of 2017.
Show move.
Second.
Good, Bev's at first grade level, 1, 2, 3.
Wilson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Bev Cop?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item C is discussion of possible action to authorize the county election board to close precinct number 760002 in Woods County in accordance with Oklahoma Statute 26.
How many people live there?
That's the question, that's the part of our precinct that is the Cimarron River.
How many people live there?
Nobody.
If you live in the Cimarron River, you're in that precinct.
Correct.
So I don't know anybody that's going to live there.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
So where do they have it opened at?
Wonoka.
Wonoka.
There's no one that lives there because you can't live in the river?
You can't.
Well, you can.
Could.
You just have to build a house on poles.
Yeah, talk to Florida, Ben has it.
Wilson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Bev Cop?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item D is discussion of possible action to authorize the county election board to close Harpville County Precinct Number 300303 in accordance with Oklahoma Statute 26.
Got a question on that. Didn't we close that one last year?
Yes, close every election.
Ah, okay.
I'll make a motion. One voter.
What about, I'll make a motion.
Put him in.
Second, whatever, second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Bev Cop?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
What about the one in Woodward County? Can they not get it to where they can vote at the caves?
Because those guys are supposed to here, right?
Yeah, they vote in Moreland.
Yeah, they have to go to Moreland now to vote. They used to do it at the caves when, I guess it was Merle Burkhart, but he ran the voter station there. I mean, he was the one who ran the deal there. When he moved off, then I don't know what the heck happened there in the county, but that's where they decided.
I know a lot of county elections have, election boards have had to change and close precincts for multiple reasons. One, they have a hard time getting election workers for one. And then two, their budgets have been cut, so they have to move them where they get the most people that will come to vote now, so.
But ours is already open. If ours is open here?
They're in a different county, they have to vote at their, they have to vote at the same place. They, they, they have to vote at the same place wherever their, the county tells them to go vote. Or they can request absentee ballots.
Item number 7 is new business.
I have none.
Item number 8 is to adjourn. I'll make the most adjourn at 7:40.
Second.